Yesterday.
Twice yesterday.
Twice yesterday, I saw two different times about how tea is a good antioxidant. They think may have some benefit with coronavirus.
Yeah, they did. They said that especially the lemon tea, something it's supposed to do down in your stomach.
Really? That's interesting.
Yeah, so I've got mine. I make some with real lemons and then I've actually got the lemon tea in the packages, so. Doing what I can.
Well, I think that's the best we can do, and I'm good with it.
That's right. Are you at work? Do you still, do you go into?
Yes, ma'am. We've got all these, uh, this SBA paycheck. That we're kind of just been thrown at the banks to do, and so we are just inundated with that.
I bet.
Working night and day, but that's okay. It's gonna be great for the community. We can get all this stuff out.
Right, right. We appreciate you.
Yes, very much.
Thank you, Dewey.
Oh, you're absolutely welcome.
Hey, Peggy.
Yeah, good morning, Peggy.
Good morning. I finally figured out how to get on. God, I'm so technologically challenged.
I am too. I am too. But this was really, it was pretty easy. You know, it's pretty easy getting in. Good morning, Stacy.
Good morning. Hey, Stacy.
Hey, Stacy.
Good morning, everyone.
Hi, Stacy.
Peggy had to be different. Peggy had to be separate, Stacy, so. You have her special good morning.
Well, you know, I had to get down my list here to see Stacy had joined.
I don't see any video yet, so I'm not sure what I'm doing wrong, but at least I'm on audio.
We don't have video.
It's not video? That explains it.
Is the mayor there?
Peggy, how are you seeing who's here?
Down the left him, you know, Mara, it shows who's speaking and that type of deal.
Yeah, I see who's speaking. I thought maybe there was a list somewhere.
All I know is Wesley sounds like an.
I sound like.
Hey, Wesley.
What, what do I sound like? I didn't hear that.
I said it's here. Oh, goody. I like this. Um, I said it sounded like an ultrasound. Devin, that looks good.
Okay, so Devin, with that up, where do we find the little hand when it's time to speak now?
I'm sorry, Mara, I was closing the door.
Yes, and everybody probably knows but me, but I see the agenda, but the little bars down at the bottom where you raise your hand and stuff have disappeared.
Oh, man, they have, oh, if you kind of hover your mouse over it.
Okay.
Comes back up.
Oh, okay. I don't have a mouse.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm doing it from laptops. I'm not sure, um.
You just hit the bottom, Devin, and it comes up.
Okay. There it is. Yeah, I see it.
Yeah, got it.
Thanks, Dewey.
You're welcome.
Dewey, I didn't know you were such a tech guy.
Well, I won't say anything. I've got my tech guy in here with me, but don't say anything, okay?
Oh, there you go. There you go.
Hey, is the mayor there?
He's not, not yet.
So Devin, do we need to go ahead and mute our microphones now, so we're?
That would be great. Or I can mute them for you guys. You don't know how, I can mute them.
Hey, Devin. Tell the mayor I've got the prayer this morning, okay?
Is the mayor coming in for the meeting?
I just text the mayor.
The mayor?
And I'll see what he says.
Hey, Norma.
Hi, good morning. I've been listening to y'all.
Uh-oh, about the donuts.
And the lemon tea.
Norma, I did finally figure it out.
You did. Great.
Did you say, Norma, you found the mayor?
I've texted the mayor, but he has not responded. If council wishes, we can go ahead and get started, and Peggy can start the meeting.
Peggy, won't you start the meeting, then I'll say the prayer, if that's okay, the invocation.
I just, I just got a text back from the mayor. He's, he's having problems logging on. Send him the information again, but if you guys want to start, I'll make sure he's aware of that.
I'll go ahead and start with the invocation, if that's okay. I got a prayer that was sent to me, and I think it just really hits home. If y'all bow with me. May we who are merely inconvenienced remember those whose lives are at stake. May we who have no risk factors remember those most vulnerable. May we who have the luxury of working from home remember those who must choose between preserving their health or making their rent. May we who have the flexibility to care for our children when their schools close remember those who have no options. May we who have to cancel our trips remember those that have no place to go. May we who are losing our margin money in the tumult of the economic market remember those who have no margin at all. May we who settle in for quarantine at home remember those who have no home. During this time when we cannot physically wrap our arms around each other, let us yet find ways to be the loving embrace of God to our neighbors. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Dewey. We needed to hear that.
Peggy?
Yes.
Uh, we've added an item, as you all know, about COVID-19 testing.
Yes.
It is, it was listed on the supplemental agenda as number thirteen. But I would say that it might be appropriate to move that item to number one. That way, the representatives from both hospitals can go on about their day, if that's okay.
That's perfect. I was wondering about that, so they didn't have to go through the rest of our business. So let's do that. Let's go ahead and move agen- agenda number thirteen up to for, to number one.
Uh, so I, I, the mayor and I talked yesterday, and we talked a little bit with Judge Hayes, and one of the things that we felt was important for the council to, to hear, if you've heard this already, to hear it again about the whole testing process. I know that you've received questions, as have I, about the testing criteria, the number of tests. And now there's, there's been a lot, a lot of question regarding whether or not Odessa needs a drive-through test facility. And so I thought, uh, Mayor and I thought that it would be appropriate to allow the hospitals to talk about that a little bit. They are the, the clinical experts. They have the expertise and the knowledge. So I wanted to invite them, moreover, just to give us an overview of testing. Probably more important, answer any questions that the council may have regarding testing and things like a testing facility, drive-through facility. So at this point, uh, Russell, if you don't mind, I'd like to start with you, and you can talk about the testing occurring at your hospital. What pro, what procedures you guys are following, the availability of tests, and then again, your thoughts and or opinions on the drive-through facility.
Good morning. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Yes, thank you.
All right, great. Good morning to y'all all, and the gentleman that said the prayer, thank you for that. I think that that is very appropriate, given our situation. Just to update on, on the testing, I, I think it's very important just to remember a couple of things. Number one, the testing that we're doing, and I know that Stacy has going, we are following the CDC recommended guidelines. Pretty darn close. I mean, we are, we, we have had those in our plan from the beginning. And I think it's important to note that as those plans change, we are changing with those, the recommendations. That we felt like it was very important to have stability in the way we perform, and the best way to lay that out was to follow the CDC guidelines. Some of these testing sites you see that have popped up around, well, Texas and the country, for lack of better terms, have pretty much abandoned the guidelines, that they're just mass testing no matter what. But at the same time, we felt like it was very important to hold to those guidelines and to follow those as closely as possible. Another thing to remember, I shared this with the commissioner's court yesterday, is just because you test negative today doesn't mean you'll be negative in two days. Because this thing is so, it moves so quickly, it moves so easily. And so the question was, what does, you know, a mass testing, what does that provide, other than peace of mind or comfort, maybe is a better word? What does it provide? And I think biggest thing it provides is data. Of course, that data, to me, is only as well as, and as good as the, when it's tested, because that's moving so quickly. I know, um, that, you know, there's a lot of talk, you know, why is it Edgar County testing more? What, what's the deal? You know, Midland's got three or four hundred tested. Why are we keeping up with those numbers? I think, um, just the thought that we need to remind ourselves and stick with is that we are holding to the guidelines, and the testing is ramped up. I mean, we, we've seen more tests at medical center in the last four or five days than we did in the first twenty days. And that's just because, you know, some guidelines are changing. The, our orders, you know, it takes a doctor's order. We're getting more orders to get those tested. But, you know, I think even yesterday was discussed, you know, the question of have you been out of the country was always number one on the testing guidelines. And I think that that question is, it hasn't been removed, but is becoming less prevalent, just because there's no need to travel out of the country to get this virus, that you can pick it up down the street. So that's just an example of kind of how these guidelines are changing. But at the same time, we are seeing more testing. I know that, I saw some numbers this morning. That medical center, we've done over a hundred tests, so I know Odessa Regional's done a lot too, and I'll let them speak to that, but at the same time, I just want to let the council know, we appreciate y'all's support. Should we become overwhelmed, we will have to turn to our other partners, which includes y'all, to help advance this forward. But I think where we stand right now, we're in pretty decent shape. The data we're receiving is good data. It's, 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 it's very, it's right-sized for our community and for the number of patients we serve. But I also feel very confident in the, I guess, in the structure that we have going, and that that structure is meeting our need at this time. But again, let me say that with caution that that can change quickly, and we appreciate the city council being ready to stand in and help us fill that gap when that time rises. And with that, I will hush, and I will hand it over to Stacy. I think she's on her too. Stacy? If you want to take it from there, I'll let you have the floor.
She may need to unmute herself.
I think I saw Dr. Strav. Are you on here, doc?
I'm here.
You want to take it from there, until we get Stacy on?
Sure. I'm not sure. I know Stacy's on the call. I'm not sure why we can't hear her. Let me add a little bit of context to our discussion on testing, uh, testing. So Stacy just walked in my office as well, so.
They heard me earlier. I'm not sure what happened, but I went mute because I didn't change anything, but I apologize. Thank you, Russell. I just wanted to thank the council for inviting us to have an opportunity to update you on what's going on at Odessa Regional. I didn't mean to barge in and interrupt Dr. Sarah Bannon, but I wanted you to know that I was here. So far, we've tested eighty-three community members, none of which have been positive, and sixty-one negative. We have thirteen pending. Exactly as Russell said, we're on the same page in terms of the testing in the community. We are following the CDC guidelines. I think something that's very important for the council to know and understand is that if we sway from those guidelines, we're going to run out of testing supplies. We only have about five hundred kits as it stands today, testing kits. And so we want to be able to use those in the most prudent fashion. When Michael and I were talking yesterday, one of the things that keeps coming up is Michael's Midland tested more, and I don't know that we know the answer to that. They may have more that are meeting CDC criteria, or they may have ventured from it some. But with Russell's hundred, my eighty-three, we're somewhere around two hundred tests compared to about five hundred, I think, in Midland. But yet their positives are the same. And so I think that's important to note, that more testing doesn't necessarily result in more cases being identified, at least not yet. And so we're trying to preserve the inventory that we have, so that we do have it available for those who actually needing, need it. Uh, the other thing that Russell said that's the same here is we still have capacity in our testing center that we only have open now from nine to one, Monday through Friday. Uh, there's still capacity there, so when docs identify the need to test a patient, we have no problem getting them in the same day. And as that volume grows, if it grows, when it grows, uh, can increase the hours at that facility before we need to go to an off-site testing facility. And then the last thing that I wanted to mention is, um, I think we've told you guys this before, we also have new equipment coming in mid-April that'll allow us to do rapid testing, so we'll be able to get our test results back in about forty-five minutes, as opposed to anywhere between two to five days currently. And so the question that we still don't have a good answer for is the supply aspect of that. Will that give us the ability to have, uh, greater testing supplies as well, to be able to increase that volume of testing along with getting better turnaround time? So once we have that answer, we'll certainly let you know. Savannah, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Sure. I was just gonna provide a little bit of context to the, uh, testing. Within the WebEx chat box, I'm putting the link for the CDC's website for clinical criteria for testing. Uh, and there's a, there's a priorities on there that you can read through, priority one, two, and three, and then the non-priorities. That's kind of what we're following for now. The priority one, two, and three are for symptomatic individuals who need to be tested, and the non-priority is the asymptomatic individuals, people that are not feeling sick. Obviously, there is a risk of asymptomatic, uh, individuals carrying the virus as well. And so that's probably what some of the biggest discussions is, when do you start this mass testing of people that don't necessarily meet the criteria, which is basically the asympto- asymptomatic individuals? And the answer to that, I think, is to be determined by data from public health standpoint. So if you look at where we are as a community in the curve of where coronavirus hits our community, we should decide to do mass testing outside of CDC guidelines based on where we are on that curve. And only the public health department can really help us understand where we are, who we should test, and when we should start the mass testing. So that's not where we are right now, because cases are trickling in, to be, to be gentle with that word. There, you know, few, few cases here and there, few hundred cases here and there is still considered a trickle compared to what the peak could be. You know, some of our projections are calling for peaks over ten thousand cases in our community, and that's not where we are now. So because we're not on that graph yet, then the health department needs to help us with when we should start that mass testing. Um, the other context I wanted to provide is about the actual test itself. Initially, when the COVID test was released, uh, under the emergency use agreement by FDA, the, the medium in which the swab goes was very limited. So each of us, ourselves and medical center, probably had about forty or fifty tests on hand. And so the criteria at that time was even more stringent than the priority criteria that is now from the CDC. So we were following that criteria very strictly, and that allowed us to test only those people that met the criteria. The labs have now been able to identify that they can expand the medium, so they can either split the medium into smaller, uh, smaller amounts, or they can use alternative medium, and that allows us to have more testing kit availability. So now we're not really, um, limited by the amount of medium or the type of medium. We are more limited by the number of physical swabs, the ones that go in the nose or the mouth to collect the specimen. Uh, so we have several hundred now, like Stacy said, and so does medical center. So the limitation now is not because we don't have enough testing kits. The limitations will when should we utilize those testing kits in mass numbers, uh, if they, if they don't meet the CDC criteria? Uh, and will the labs be able to handle the numbers that we would send if we started mass testing? A public health lab is a difficult lab to send tests to. It takes more paperwork. It takes more effort. Uh, and Russell can tell you that, because they used to send only to public health labs in the beginning. Uh, what we did right from the beginning is we started sending to private labs. Initially, we were sending to LabCorp. LabCorp was turning, supposed to turn things around in four to five days. But the first few specimens we sent out actually went quite far away from where we are now, and it so took two, two-week turnaround on those. Currently, LabCorp is at four to five days. Then we started sending to CPL. CPL had a one-to-two-day turnaround. Obviously, now that more people are sending to CPL, including now medical center as well, their turnaround time is also longer. It's now three to four days. So the labs also are going to be a limiting factor when we start to do mass testing. So that's the context I wanted to provide, and if anybody has any questions specific to that, be happy to answer.
Are there any questions? Remember, you have to raise your hand.
And you're all muted. So if you raise your hand, then I'll unmute you here. Michael has a question.
Yes, Dr. Sarah Vanna, maybe this is a question, um, that's more appropriate for you. What exactly is the current CDC criteria for testing someone?
So that's the link that I put in the chat box. Feel free to click on that link. I'll try to summarize what it says. There's three priorities. Priority one is hospitalized patients and symptomatic healthcare workers. Priority two is high-risk patients, that's basically defined as elderly or people with comorbid medical conditions, other medical conditions, who are also symptomatic. And priority three is the other infrastructure, the, the, the essential infrastructure workers, uh, who are also symptomatic. So all three priorities, one, two, and three, require symptoms. Uh, and then the non-priority is the asymptomatic individuals.
Other questions?
Can you hear me? Okay, I raised my hand. Is it showing on this, or Devin can be tell?
No, ma'am, but, but go ahead and speak.
Okay. Um, I have a question. I don't really know who this will go to. Are our outline community hospitals? I know that seriously ill or injured people are generally sent here from Monahans, Andrews, Pecos, you know, the surrounding communities. Do they have any capability to care for the extreme cases of, of their own residents?
This is, this is Russell. I'll be happy to answer that. We had a conference call last week with the region. When I say the region, we had seventeen hospitals on. And the discussion was exactly that, right directly to your question was, first of all, how many patients do they have currently, um, with COVID or without? Most of those were zero both ways. Seems like our industry has really slowed outside of the COVID business. Then the discussion was, uh, when you get to these patients that need hospitalized, how many ventilators do you have? How many reverse air rooms do you have? And it seemed like most of those, the answer was one or two. So that, that conversation quickly turned in, okay, let's say you get four or five, you're gonna need to send those to Odessa. And if that's the case, we need to be able to ship back to them non-COVID, non-emergent patients, so we can keep bed space open. Now, that's, that's, that's a long ways out there. We want to, we want to hold our own as long as possible and be able to service our folks right here. At the same time, just to be in reality, in the real world, should we get, should medical center and regional get overwhelmed? What would be the, um, because around us, if you take these seventeen counties right now, there's probably two hundred empty beds around the Odessa area that are sitting empty right now. That should we both fill up, there, um, we would, we need to be able to, I think, we should be able to send, you know, regular, non-COVID patients out, that they can take care of those while we're filling the need for the COVID patients here in Odessa.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, Mara has a question.
Yes, I just had a question concern. I was looking at the guidelines, um, and it says present with symptoms. If someone is presenting with maybe one of the symptoms, and they fall under these categories, will they be seen, or do they need to have maybe the throat, the cough, you know, several symptoms?
So yes, uh, one symptom would qualify as meeting the criteria, but those are again, medical decisions. So the criteria is being shared with providers, and providers are being asked to write an order for the COVID test. So to your question, each patient will be evaluated independently by that provider, and then they would decide whether or not the test was appropriate for them. Because just one of those symptoms doesn't necessarily mean you have COVID. You could have a plethora of other medical conditions. So the provider would evaluate that patient, determine that they have ruled out other medical conditions before suspecting COVID, and then would order the test.
Okay.
All right, Councilman Bryant.
Our medical advisors, our hospital administrators are saying, both Stacy and Randy, and, and I think it's, I think it's important we follow their game plan and their recommendations. They're the ones that are there every day, or the ones that see it. I, I just think that the game plan that they have in place, I support fully. Thank you all for what you're doing, Stacy and Randy and your staff. Thank you again.
Other comments or questions?
My hand raised, but I, am I on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, I just, I just wanted to clarify so that we can speak better to this. Because we have, the number of cases we have with a smaller denominator of tests, it appears that we have a higher percentage of pos, of people with, with COVID-19. What you're saying that we need to be able to get that message out is that we are just being more judicious with our tests. We're just not testing everybody. We're following these guidelines. And the guidelines work very well for determining who is positive. Is that, is that right? Am I reading this correctly?
Yes, that was perfectly said.
Okay. The last thing I had is, what is the website where you can go and get an update on the number of cases and where they came from? People send me this, but I don't know where to find it.
I will paste that link in WebEx also. It is from the. It is from the Texas Department of Health and it's a beautiful dashboard that's in real time. So I will paste that link in one second.
Okay, and thank you so much for all that you do. We're, we're getting, we're planning a little thing to, that you'll be seeing to, to help thank you. But thanks so much for being on the front line with us.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you for all the-
Thank you very much. Thank you all for being here for the meeting and thank you for, uh, this information to council. We all get asked a lot of questions and this really helps everyone be on top of it.
Our pleasure, thank you for inviting us.
Very much.
Thank you. Evan, if you'll go ahead and put the agenda back up.
Okay. Podium, can y'all put the agenda back up, please?
Uh, item number one, consider approval of the perks of the NIB hand cartridge acquisition. Chief Turkey. Chief, we can't hear you. Yes, we can hear you now.
Um, this is a system again, here is the national integrated ballistic imaging network. Uh, what this will do will allow us to-
If you've got a bad connection. It's hard to hear. Why don't we go to item two and let Chief fix this connection? Hal, are you ready?
Mayor, if you'll give us a minute, uh, they're, they're both at the actual podium. Let us, uh, let us figure out why that, that connection is so bad.
Yeah, sure.
Couple minutes.
Is this an audio connection?
That's a lot better.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a request to purchase the, uh, the software and the hardware necessary to enter into an agreement with ATF so that we can be part of the National Integrated Ballistic Imaging Network. What that will allow us to do is to take those spent steel cartridges that we collect at shooting, um, scenes and pump them into the national network. And we can, we basically create a fingerprint database for guns. We're spending two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for this, but every cent of it is, um-
Anybody have any questions?
Somebody's typing really fast.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Kind of unmute you.
Yeah. Is this a budgeted item?
This is not a budgeted item, but again, it's grant funds. These grant funds can only be spent on, um, law enforcement equipment.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, chief. And please tell your guys and girls, thank you for everything they're doing right now. Doing the best again. Item two, consider ordinance to establish signalized intersection speed limits in schools and parking zones.
Good afternoon, good morning. My first item is, uh, a bunch of traffic related items. The first part is two traffic signals I need to install. It's at eighty-seventh and Dawn and eighty-seventh and Evans Boulevard. The Dawn signal will greatly help the, uh, school rush hour traffic. And the Evans traffic signal is going to help all that north park development. Then I've got a couple of, uh, speed limits. The first one is on Trump Street. And back in January of last year, the city did an annexation of several roadways. I overlooked, uh, this street trunk. I, I took all the other annex streets and brought them into the city ordinance, but I forgot to do this one. That's what this is, is house cleaning. It's basically to get trunk at the existing speed limit into our ordinance, so it's enforceable by- The second roadway for a speed limit is Royal Road. Um, that was recently completed by the developer. So now it connects from Loop three thirty-eight to, uh, Billy next road. So I'm wanting to establish that speed limit at, uh, forty, forty miles an hour. Then the next section of topics I have are school zone. Lamar Elementary warrants for its school zone on letting to leave. In this case, E, ECISD is going to purchase the equipment and then the city will install and maintain. The next, uh, school zone is for First Baptist Church. It's going to be on Seventh Street. The church has agreed to pay for the equipment and the installation and the city will maintain that equipment. And then the final, um, school zone is for Saint Mary's Church. On Eighteenth Street, the church is going to pay for the equipment and the city will install and maintain. The last part of this agenda item is prohibited parking. And that is on Muskegon or ORMC. They have made a couple of requests. And so what this basically is, is they requested it always stop at Fifth and Husky Hill for their increased pedestrians traffic. And they've also requested a crosswalk north of there across Muskegon. And what these, what these no parking prohibitive zones are is basically a cleanup of what was there and to increase sight distance for the new proposed crosswalk. That's what this whole agenda item is.
Any questions?
Hal, is there a consideration about putting a school zone there at Vice?
So there has been, there has been request of a school zone on Vice, or Vice on eighty-seventh street. Um, I'm very concerned about putting a school zone with a crosswalk across eighty-seventh street for when the school zone is not active. I'm afraid of people trying to cross a seven lane roadway. And the other, the other thing-
Lost you, Hal.
Crossing the street, not necessarily just traffic on the roadway. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no. You don't hear him now?
Can you hear me now?
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, I was, I was saying the, um, uh, uh, on, the school zones are targeted for children that are crossing the street. Currently, we don't have any kids that are crossing eighty-seventh street. So I'm hesitant to do a school zone there. What I'm hoping for is that because the traffic signal at Dawn and eighty-seventh is warranted, that that will help, uh, uh, control traffic flow on eighty-seventh. Thank you.
Any questions? Is everybody good with this?
I've got one.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Now, if I understood that correctly, one of the considerations is for a school zone for Lamar, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now, and it's not that I'm opposed to that. I, it not, I completely understand that. However, are we going to open the door for every daycare that has four-year-olds to want speed zones in front of them? Because, you know, I thought ideally that a lot of that, the school zones were for to make a safer environment for children that potentially could be crossing the street unsupervised. And, uh, and you know, with our daycares, that should never be the case. There should be a parent walking them up. And so is that going to set a precedence for us that will end up being a nightmare for you?
Can I ask you a question? Are you talking about Lamar, uh, Early Education Center? Or are you talking about First Baptist Church School?
Well, I know First Baptist Church School, since they have become a, a, a school for older kids, elementary and up. I, I kind of figured that was the case for them. And so really what I was more concerned with is Lamar, since it is strictly Lamar early education.
Yeah, uh, no, I'm considering Lamar since it's a ECISD school and it met the qualifications for students crossing the street as well as traffic volumes on the street. And it, it's legitimately satisfies our warrants for a school zone.
Okay, because you know, back maybe a year or so ago, it was brought up about one of the daycares on Patterson, I believe. You know, it's, it was a, it was a Southside, um, daycare, basically. But they were wanting some type of traffic control. And I think Malcolm had brought that up or something. I, I, I really can't recall who brought it up. But, you know, my thoughts on that is those kids are not crossing without a pa- or should never be crossing without a guardian. And, and so that was kind of the justification why we didn't do school zones for pre elementary school age, you know? And so, like I said, I'm not opposed to it because I know Lamar is extremely congested. You know, it's got a large number of students and, and, you know, all of that. And so I'm not opposed to them, to it. I want to make sure everyone knows that. But I just don't want this to create an issue for us in the future when other daycares think that they have too much traffic and, and want school zones.
And, and I understand your concern, but I viewed it as since Lamar is a, as a functioning ECISD school, I didn't see that concern or that, that didn't raise an eyebrow with me.
Well, and that, I mean, you know, to me, that's a different, you know, thing also because with ECISD, you know that that is, I mean, nothing's definite, but basically a, a permanent, um, situation where a daycare could close tomorrow, you know, depending on. And I just, once again, I didn't want this to be something that we're going to have to justify in the future with private daycares.
That is a good point. And, um, as, as, and I do remember what you were referring to earlier about that, that Southside daycare. But, uh, as far as my knowledge, a formal request for a particular daycare has not arisen yet. Everything I'm, I've done to date is either ECISD or another founded school, uh, location.
Yeah, and I know like Saint Mary's, First Baptist, all of those, again, they're, they're, um, older than preschool, you know, so, you know, I don't have any problem with those, obviously. But just, just curious, just wanted to pick your brain on that one.
Yeah, good point, good point.
Okay, I believe Michael has something.
So wanted the council to be aware, in the case of, uh, both Saint Mary's and, uh, First Baptist, those non-ECISD schools, they are paying for the equipment, right? And that typically would be the position that the city would take is, um, the requester would, would, in, in almost every case, pay for that equip- equipment. We would have it installed and then maintain it afterwards, is that correct?
That is absolutely correct, yes.
Comments or questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Evan.
Okay.
And three, consider adoption of the revised master thoroughfare plan.
So what I'll bring in to you today is, um, back in October of two thousand seventeen, city council adopted the master thoroughfare plan that we presented. After, we have just recently completed our transportation master plan, it brought some light to us and we, we looked at the, the master plan, master thoroughfare plan that we had adopted back in seventeen. And we identified five roadways that we felt needed some updating. And basically that is because of the existing roadway network. And after what we've learned at, from our, from our transportation master plan in that we have so much pavement that we need to maintain, maybe this is an opportunity to scale back some of that pavement. And so four of these highlighted, and I've included a map that shows the highlights of what I'm trying to, uh, get across. And four of these roadways are currently major archerials on the plan, which is a seven lane roadway. Then I'm trying to downgrade to a five lane minor arterial roadway and a like Dixie, Fifty Second. These roadways have bigger roadways, uh, adjacent to it. And the, and one roadway, which is Mission Boulevard, I'm actually upgrading the classification in that, that Mission Boulevard was, is already constructed and, and we don't anticipate any widening. So what I'm proposing is to take Mission to a, um, a larger, uh, classification. That's, that's what this agenda item is, is just to clarify and update the master thoroughfare plan that we adopted back in October of two thousand seventeen.
Are there any questions for council?
I don't, I don't think this council, the new members have actually seen this. We came on in November of seventeen.
And that's, that's a very good point. And yeah, this was adopted in October, so this would have been just before that you came on board. Yes, ma'am.
I, I would personally like to see that thoroughfare plan.
And that's one of the attachments in the agenda item. There's actually three attachments. I put the, the, uh, existing one or the one that was adopted in October of seventeen, that's an attachment. And then the second attachment is basically the five roadways highlighted, so they kind of stand out on the plan. And then last attachment is what I'm proposing.
Okay, I, I see that, I'm sorry. I saw that, but I wasn't sure what it was, okay?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
You get some-
Mayor? Uh, I, I think Peggy brings up a good point. We could bring back a more expanded presentation on the master thoroughfare plan.
Fantastic, it's good just to update everybody on it.
Okay. Um, we can, we can certainly do that. Um, we'll, we'll have a presentation that's a bit more, uh, in-depth on what the plan contains.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, next we will move to, uh, yes.
Can I ask a quick question? Okay, on hell, are you in there, my friend?
Yes. Yes.
All right. Um, looking at these attachments and, and some of these highlighted areas on the roads that I guess are identified for, um, improvements, maybe, I guess, um, I'm still, now tell me if I'm, if I'm wrong on this because now focus your attention on District Three. Um, am I looking at this correctly, that Twenty Third, is it just that that is identified as a, as a, let me get my terminology, a collector or is that one that is being identified for improvement?
Uh, no, Twenty Third is identified on the master thoroughfare plan as a collector roadway and there's no, there's no, uh, changes proposed to that street.
Okay, all right.
Well, that will remain as a collector roadway.
Okay, all right. I'm just trying to get my bearings on this attachment, on, on what I'm actually looking, looking at on it. And, um, and so I think, I think I've somewhat got what you're talking about, so, very good. Thank you, sir.
Not a problem.
Any other questions? Consider resolution to approve a PSA with KDC Associate Steve.
Good morning, everybody. It's Steve Patton.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
So I guess next on the agenda is, uh, our, consider resolution to, for professional services contract with Kelly Cook. And I, I'm not sure, Kelly might be in the wings one way or another. I think he's gonna join us. Um, I, I don't know if he can hear us now or not, but.
Yeah, I'm here.
He has a hand raised, yeah, but he's unmuted as well.
Kelly, you're there?
Yes.
All right. Hey, man, this technology thing's great. Um, this is for, no, this professional services contract is with KDC Associates. It is for the design of Floyd Gwynne Park. Not only the design and specifications, but also all the bid documents. And he would also provide the inspections, uh, host our bid meetings, and also host all of our construction update meetings and a little bit more than what we normally do cuz this is a huge project for us. And I will, he'll pretty much administer the entire project. And, um, that's also gonna include some engineering services that will include electrical engineer, do all of our, our, uh, electrical engineering for our lighting packages. Now, we are gonna have some options in the set of plans and we're breaking these down into the trades, get some of the best, um, possible pricing. And so we're looking at several different, um, packages that the way we're gonna break this thing apart. And that's gonna take a little bit of extra on Kelly's part to make that happen, but it will be a situation that will save us some funds. And one thing I do like is we've, uh, from the onset have talked about building the courts at Sherwood, and this is from our last discussion, we will have that as an option. Bid alternate, but if we can afford to do that and the prices are good, I imagine we're gonna get some better pricing now that our economy is in the state that it is. We'll have, hopefully get all of our post-attention slabs done and Floyd Gwynne, which would be our basketball courts as well as our volleyball courts and the two tennis courts. And then we would put two tennis courts at Sherwood along with, um, our two basketball courts at Sherwood. But those will also all be designed. We will also have as a bid alternate lighting for the walking trail. And O'Meara had mentioned that. We wanna have that as a bid alternate so that at least we have the pricing, the process coming good and we can afford it. We'll look at that. But if we can't afford it, we'll have a bid package ready to go when we do have the funds available in the future. So those are all good things, um, that we're planning for, not only to cover, uh, in the, the base bid, also some options that we'll have to consider if we get some good prices. And if the funds aren't available, we'll have the plans ready to go.
Are there any questions for Steve?
Now, Kelly is here and I, I think he did wanna make a.
Go ahead.
Well, and I wanna thank the, the council for, for hearing us and for letting us take part in this project. We worked very closely with the city of Odessa for almost thirty years now, and, um, we've had great partnerships. I appreciate you guys, uh, supporting us on this. One thing that I think is interesting on this project is, one, we've all been talking about this for a while and it's given our office a little bit of time to do a little bit of extra work, uh, and take a look at some of the, uh, economics behind this and visit with some of the potential contractors. And just kind of for your back pocket, um, we're hearing that this project is going to, uh, employ between seventy-five, a hundred and twenty-five people in late summer. So with the, uh, and that's, it's probably a hundred and eighty to two hundred and seventy in the project. So with the uncertain economic times that we're facing out here, uh, seventy-five to a hundred and twenty-five new, uh, construction jobs might be a very beneficial thing to the community. That, that's all I wanted to say. We will develop this, as Steve said, in a package format so that we have a, a certain project. We're not gonna have to get into a situation where we're over budget on anything. We'll have one base bid project and then we will have packages from there that can be add alternates. And, and really, we won't know from a construction estimating time or framework what we are looking at until all this plays out a little bit right now. We are anticipating that we're gonna have some contractors extremely, extremely eager to pursue this work and hopefully we'll be able to get some very beneficial cost because of that. So I'll answer any questions, any of you have, but I, I just wanted to thank you guys.
Are there any questions?
Thank you, Kelly. This is exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you to both of you. We look forward to seeing it play out.
Andrew, did you have any questions?
No, I'm just playing with my computer.
Oh, okay.
Okay, then we'll move to the next one.
Great.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five, consider purchase of thirty-three sets of personal protective equipment, Chief Ortega.
He's on his way.
Okay.
We're having them wait outside and then we're throwing them in.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Good mor- good morning.
Morning.
We're taking, uh, got two things on the agenda. The first one is the, uh, personal protective equipment. This is to purchase thirty-three sets. Seventy-eight thousand and nine hundred, just wasn't. This was approved in the supplementals. Uh, every year we purchase at least thirty-five sets. I think this year we asked for forty sets. Uh, because we increased in personnel last year and, uh, the year before, so we wanted to just keep up with that. BP does expire every ten years and then of course we have to, uh, test it twice a year, make sure it gets past all of our tests. And when it doesn't, we, we have to replace those certain things. So this is, uh, just to, to replace thirty-three sets.
Are there any questions from council?
Nope, I do. I have one. And I thought I raised my hand. Sorry.
It's up.
Okay, good. Hey, Saul, I know that the personal protective that is proposed on this is for firefighting, uh, purposes. But, uh, how are you guys standing on personal protective equipment, uh, to combat this Corona issue?
Uh, so we, we're doing everything we can to stay ahead of the curve. Um, our goal is to try to have we're between a thirty and sixty-day stock of, uh, masks, gowns, gloves. We're doing a pretty good job of that. One of the things we are having trouble on is the mask, just like everybody else in the country. We currently have a forty supplies, forty-day stock if we stay at, at this burn rate that we currently have. And we have several orders out there. So if they come in the way they're, they're supposed to, we're, we're, we'll be doing just fine.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's anticipating that we increase our, our daily burn rate a little bit.
Okay, and you know, in regard to, um, or in addition to the mask and the gowns and gloves, I mean, masking gloves, are the, are the EMS personnel wearing any other type of protective gear like the?
Yes.
Little coverall suits or anything along that line?
So they're not wearing, they're wearing, uh, the booties, um, on their, on their feet. We have, uh, shower cap or the caps, the surgical caps coming in. They, they have not arrived. Those have been backordered a few times.
Okay.
But they are wearing goggles and/or a full face shield. Uh, they wear the N ninety-five mask and then they either wear a surgical mask over the N ninety-five or they're wearing homemade mask over the N ninety-five to get extended use out of the N ninety-fives. Uh, and then they wear a, if they're having heavy contact with any patients, then they, they put on a gown, uh, and double glove. If they're just having what we call casual contact, which is they may just be assisting, loading the cauda to the back of the medics and they're not using the gowns themselves. They're just wearing the gloves and, and the mask and goggles.
Okay, all right. Again, thank you very much.
Sure, no problem.
Any other questions on this agenda item?
Do. I think I raised my hand. I just wanted to check with the chief and see, are we, are we deploying the ambulances that are specifically set up for the COVID nineteen, for the quarantine? Are we seeing a lot of use for those?
So, uh, the only difference in those, we're, so we're using those just in our, our regular run stream as well. You have the ISOPod at two particular stations and so they are set up for that. Fortunately, we haven't had to. We, we've deployed it once and, uh, we have a, you know, our, what we call our no transport criteria. And.
I'm being told that's off the agenda.
Okay, we can't speak to that cuz it's not on the agenda. But we can have them send out an email, uh, to update the council on that. Any other questions on this agenda?
I was just talking about protected gear, sorry.
Mayor, mayor, this is, this is Wesley. I, I don't know, I, I raised my hand. I was just gonna wonder if what we talked about yesterday on those Tyvek suits could be added to this purchase?
No, because it's, it's gotta come through the process, so, um.
The top is in here. We can't speak about that right now because it's not on the agenda. Need an update on that also.
Yeah, we'll send an email on that, Wes. Item six, consider purchase for remodel of Fire Station Two, Saul. Chief Ortega.
So this is to add a other bedroom to Station Two. We did this years ago at, uh, Station Three. Uh, this is at a cost of seventy-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. What this will allow us is to, um, house another person there. We currently only house four individuals there because of, that's all we have room for. We could put a fifth there, but that doesn't help us too much. So this is actually gonna give us five bedrooms in the back. We still have the captain's bedroom, so that's a total of six bedrooms. And this will allow us to start running the ambulance and fire truck that's there together. Uh, currently they run either or, that is a squad station. So they either run all on the ambulance or all on the fire truck. By doing this, this, uh, uh, makes those, both those units a little bit more available. One of them's not out of service, one of the other ones out, and so that will help us with our increased run load. This was approved in, um, supplemental budget as well.
Are there any questions?
Detroit, did you have a question?
No, ma'am, I don't. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Item seven, consider the purchase of four Lucas automatic CPR devices, Chief Ortega.
That's actually gonna be Chief Hour. Let me get him for you. He's stepping in for Chief Huber.
Thanks, Chief Ortega.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Council Mayor. Hope everybody's having a good morning. Seems like y'all are having a busy morning.
It is.
We're learning.
Very good.
Right.
Okay, okay, so this, uh, this item is to consider the purchase of Lucas automatic CPR devices. What we did is we went to council or city management last year and we asked for a supplemental, received half of that supplemental, and that's what we're gonna do is, is these are, uh, automatic CPR machines, basically. So we're really gonna improve our EMS fleet. Uh, it's gonna be a good thing for the department, a good thing for the community because hopefully, hopefully the survival outcomes for these patients can rest and improve. We have what is called ROC, ROSC, with, with, um, response of spontaneous circulation. And, uh, that's what it's really gonna help with. And the other thing that we really, cuz we had to get the medical doctor or medical director on board with this because it's, it's gonna, it's a new procedure. It's a new equipment that we're using. So he was really, uh, he, he decided he wanted to be a part of it and, uh, so we're gonna be able to purchase these things. We'll put them on four ambulances because that's, we, that approved we only have. But again, if we're running out west of town or, you know, it's, it's a twelve, fifteen-minute uh, minute transport. I mean, that's what these things are for. And really, in this day and age with this COVID nineteen, it's even gonna, you know, we're, we don't have to put hands-on CPR and be close to the patient. This must be, we'll do it all.
Are there any questions? I have one just quickly. Can a paramedic do CPR effectively just by themselves?
Uh, I would say two minutes and then you have to swap over.
Oh, it is, okay. It's, no, that's an exhausting.
It is. It's very exhausting.
Yes, sir.
And that's the other thing is when we're transporting a patient, we're not having to, you know, we, we have to be buckled up and, and it's, it's just difficult to do it en route when you're transporting a patient.
Any questions? Item eight, consider resolution accepting ARAC trauma funding.
Yes, sir. So, so again, uh, Mayor Council, this is to accept funding from the, from our region Jay, uh, at, uh, funding. Uh, this is, uh, trauma dollars that we get every year. Comes from the federal to the state. The state sends it down to the, the regional advisory councils. And so this year was thirteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars. Uh, we will need a account at some point to, uh, purchase items because, uh, we have to, we have to expend every bit of that funding. And what we normally buy with that is usually backboard stuff that we, we have to purchase in-house that, that medical center doesn't purchase.
Are there any questions from council?
You are easy on me. Good.
Item nine, consider resolution accepting and appropriating grant funding from Walmart Community Grants Team, Chief Alvaro.
Yes, sir. Again, this is to consider resolution accepting that grant funding from Walmart Community, uh, Grants Team and the facility twenty-eight ninety-one, uh, Ariel, uh, our, our M coordinator for Ariel Freilake, she applied for this loan. It was a five thousand. It's, it's a non-matching grant, so it's, it's open for us to purchase any needed equipment for the department. So, uh, we look to that and, uh, we'll, we'll find a way to, uh, recognize them at some point.
Questions, council? Thank you, chief, and please tell all your, um, men and women, thank you for what they're doing right now.
Yes, sir. And, and again, just on behalf of Odessa Fire Rescue, we just wanna say thanks to our city management team, PIO team, and truly, uh, our council members and our, our new mayor as well for your leadership and getting us through this, uh, this COVID nineteen. We'll continue to provide the service that we need to provide to the community and, uh, we're prepared. We have the equipment and, uh, we're set to go. getting us through this uh, this COVID nineteen. We'll continue to provide the service that we need to provide to the community and uh, we're prepared. We have the equipment and uh, we're set to go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Be safe.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, item ten, accept resignation of city council member District One, Hamilton.
Uh, we can't hear, hold on, hold on, hold on. Bobby, come in back here. She's coming. We got Norma.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We were trying to test the podium, but we'll work on that. This, this is to, by tech, the Texas election code, it requires a governing body to accept the resignation of a council member and this will allow a council to do that and y'all are more than welcome to accept it at this point with a motion.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Entertain a second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number eleven, discuss and consider appointment process for vacancy in District One, Ms. Grimaldo.
Yes, thank you, Council. Daniel, if you don't mind putting up the application up on the screen, please. This is just for uh, discussion and consideration for council's process on how they want to fill the vacancy for District One. And uh, just as a FYI, this application was used in two thousand and sixteen to fill District One. I did a little bit of modifications if council wishes to use this or develop their own process or change the process. I already have had several calls and inquiries through email and, and they are anxiously waiting to see what council would like to have a proceed.
I know in the past, when we had to replace Reverend McNeil due to his passing, we left uh, the period open for a little while to allow people to submit their interest. And then we did a um, interview process where we spoke to all of them and talked to them on why they wanted, what they uh, think they bring to the table versus uh, other individuals. And we said that, Norma, was it for thirty days or was it less?
Actually, would you believe council did it, accepted the resignation? Well, they had to accept the vacancy and then opened it in the next council meeting. So it was about like a two week period. It was a quick turnaround.
Thirty days is a little long, myself.
I do too. I do too.
Uh, do we think weeks and then interview and then appoint, or do we um, wanna maybe interview at a work session? And then appoint the next council meeting?
Uh, that may be the better, the better choice. That gives two weeks before our next.
Three, actually gives three weeks.
Yeah, because we'll have council next week. The interviews, so it'd be two weeks from today, we would interview, and then the next week we would appoint, which would be three weeks.
I, I mean, if we can get candidates in, I think that's good.
Yes, we got, have to talk about how we would do the interviews because yes, we can. Is that staying under ten if you're rotating a person in and out? Because it'll be seven council members, the attorney.
Norma.
Norma and then um, um, that would be six because uh, we're short one person.
Yeah.
I'm resigning.
Are these gonna be face-to-face interviews?
That's kind of what I'm, I mean, you know, we didn't have the COVID, I mean, the nineteen, did it before, but we could do it face-to-face.
Mayor and Council, Devon also suggested we could do the video conferencing.
Face-to-face.
Would be good. Norma, how in the last, when you had to do it for Reverend McNeil, how did you let people know that it was open? What is the process for doing that?
We have posted it on our websites and people, uh, the Odessa American ran a news article. Uh, so we did it on on our website and I just took phone calls.
We can, we can do that.
Posted on the LA, I'm sure.
Yes.
We could do a press release as well.
Okay. Norma, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, we, we have to submit our financial disclosure document by the end of this month. For someone coming in on this appointment, since it will only be for until November, uh, do they have to do a financial disclosure?
Yes, ma'am. If they're appointed by the council, they're gonna fall under that requirement.
Okay. Have you, on the people that have called to inquire, have you had the opportunity to let them know?
No, ma'am, not at this point. I was waiting on direction for this from the council.
Okay, I think that's gonna be a real big maybe an issue for some folks. And so we probably need to make sure that the media has that information and maybe just in a notation at the bottom of our announcement or something, you know, that just states, you know, some terminology that they're gonna have to do this.
I agree.
We have just a copy of it with the application. So this is something you're going to have to fill out. So you know, and that we've got a copy to look at.
I have a question for Peggy, um, and I'm just starting to do mine, but Peggy, do you think the time that we're doing this will allow for them to do that?
Excuse me, Council. I've been alerted that this is off the topic agenda, my.
Yeah, we can't talk about the form itself.
Okay. I was actually talking about the time, so we can't talk about the form. I mean, I was just wondering if, in her opinion, is, are we giving them enough time since they have to have that additional? We can't talk about that?
Yeah. That, that is on the Texas Ethics website. You can read it for anyone who is appointed by the council or by any other member. I was kind of skimming through that. It's, it's available. It tells how many days they have to file that report.
No, I guess my question was our timeline. Would two weeks give them enough time to submit that?
They don't have to submit it that quickly.
Oh, okay.
They just need, know they're gonna have to fill it out. They don't have to come with it.
Okay.
Everybody good with doing it, um, interview the next uh, session?
Good with it.
Is council okay with the application as it stands? Would they like to see any changes?
I, I think you need to include as we're talking about other things associated with the application, which are either this or whatever it may be, uh, as we're talking about the other things that are involved from the state's perspective. That's gotta be known, I think, anyway.
Yes, uh, I also attached into handout regarding the eligibility recall. That will be attached to the application as well, which outlines what you have to uh, be in order to serve.
So, so there'll be a, um, one week, or is it two weeks, the application process?
It'd be.
One week and then interview and then appoint, correct?
I think probably what we do is at Monday at five, um, the deadline so that we can interview on Tuesday. That way, there is a deadline and we don't have to get information right before the meeting. That way, council has a night to review.
Is that in the form of a motion?
We have to make it into a motion, Norma? I will accept a motion.
Council, just, just to confirm that, the deadline will be Monday, April the twentieth at five P M.
Oh. It's that Monday before our next.
Work session.
Work session.
Right. I think that's gonna be correct.
Entertain a motion or if there's more discussion, we can.
I have a question. So the twentieth is what?
Monday.
But I know, but what, what's the, what's that the deadline for?
That's the deadline to turn in your application.
And then when would we make the decision on the?
We'll interview on the first, is that right?
Yeah, we'd interview on the twenty-first and then.
Appoint on the twenty-eighth?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I second that motion.
Actually, I didn't make it, so we don't have a motion yet.
Yeah, Governor, I'll make it then, whatever.
I'll second it. I made it and I'll second it.
Motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we could put the council session back up.
They're working on it. The podium's working on it.
Okay.
There you go.
Onto Adam, Adam, supposed to be Adam twelve. Um, we have had the, um, I just want to talk a little bit before Natasha starts talking. We have had uh, some business owners approach the city and say, I can make certain respirators, I can make certain goods that could be used during this time of COVID nineteen. Um, some of them through three D printing, some of them through just their normal manufacturing process. Uh, it was brought to us by Wes. Uh, he called up and said, I've got somebody that can make um, uh, different things and would you be interested? And also, we have um, the school is uh, talking and they're talking about maybe being out uh, at least till the summer, uh, out of the school buildings. They are in the process of putting out um, wifi portable towers in the areas of the county that needs them so that the kids can go to school online. And uh, we have had, Motran did a study on wifi in the county. Actually, through the whole Permian Basin, I'm sorry, after County, Midland County, to look at where the suppliers were actually, they may be circling an area that doesn't have it. See if we can make, talk to the our sources to have them go ahead and offer wifi in some areas, especially in West Odessa. There's just not much of an infrastructure and they've talked about using uh, pole-based wifi sources that would be free uh, the community to be able to put some of those in. And they've actually found a source that's reasonable. Uh, so they were talking about that and um, school district came to us and said, is there's anything we can do since that's infrastructure? And I said, well, need to talk about it as council, uh, make sure they see approves anything and then it's brought to us to do that. So Natasha, I'll let you go ahead and start talking.
Um, good morning, Mayor and City Council.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Regarding this item, there is some assistance that the O D C can provide in order to help with COVID nineteen. So Wes is on the call and he's gonna speak to the specifics of that. However, in order to move forward with providing this emergency assistant, assistance, this item is to request that the council will authorize the mayor to negotiate and execute items approved by the O D C instead of having to call emergency meetings every time in order to get these emergency items approved.
We can do it either way. I wanted to get council's input on it. So Wes, why don't you go ahead and talk about it?
Alright, I was, I was waiting on being uh, added in there. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you so much for your time today and good morning and it's great to uh, hear all of you. I wish I could see you, but uh, we'll get there soon. I, I wanted to uh, as the mayor alluded to and Natasha as well, and uh, also been talking to Michael quite extensively about a lot of these things. We have had a, a couple of businesses and you probably saw one particular in the Odessa American this weekend about uh, manufacturing some uh, some equipment to help with uh, some of the testing, uh, some different box type uh, safety measures for uh, first responders to uh, maybe not to have to put on as much P P E and that sort of thing. So uh, one of those things has already sort of been uh, going, going forward. Uh, the O D C is going to meet this afternoon at three o'clock to talk about that one specifically, but as we looked at this item uh, as far as supply sourcing and manufacturing, what, what we've uh, done specifically is uh, talk about the job retention aspect of this as far as a company being able to put their workforce in place again, or continue to use their workforce to manufacture things specifically for COVID nineteen. Uh, and uh, this won't be the only, the only one. They're also talking about splitters for ventilators that can make a ventilator be used by four different people instead of just one, which might be uh, very impactful as we go on. Uh, but I appreciate the opportunity to come uh, before you, uh, at least virtually to talk about that one specifically. And I guess we can talk about all of these items together. The related infrastructure-based projects is the mayor and the school district, Kelly Wilks, their I T person, and I have visited, visited extensively about what the mayor talked about. Uh, providing wifi to all of Hector County specifically, initially the south side and the west side because those are very underserved in those markets. They have some oil field suppliers that put in and work on wifi technology for the oil and gas industry that aren't, obviously right now are not busy and do have some slack in their schedules and their capabilities to do that. So we talked about that. Putting up towers, uh, physical towers all over uh, those particular areas, but uh, ultimately throughout Hector County. Uh, initially, they would be temporary on trucks, et cetera, to be set in certain places until the tower could be installed. We're talking uh, honestly, a couple of million dollars uh, for those as far as a cost go. We are initiating discussions with the P S P uh, to get them involved. They do and have expressed interest in some form of this in the past. We think they need to step up to the plate here a little bit. I'm sorry?
Oh, it was just a noise. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, so they will be uh, asked to participate if they want to, but you know, the O D C, as we all know, has a, a fairly healthy uh, balance uh, in, in, you know, call it a rainy day fund. Well, it's raining. So I think we should uh, be able to use some of those funds for things that are specifically related to infrastructure. But this, this goes well beyond the schools, uh, using it for their capabilities. We're talking about uh, large proportions of our workforce uh, having to work from home. Uh, and if they don't have the capabilities as well, that goes directly in line with what we're talking about. We're supporting jobs and keeping those going. Uh, so I, I wanna move uh, quickly through these just for information and then answer any questions I can, but uh, the last part, uh, if Michael wants to put in this Perryman Project tab there on your, on your presentation, you can look at that. Uh, this is the last piece that O D C would like to consider and have actually uh, started considering uh, to move forward on this. We've uh, talked to Dr. Perryman about this study specifically and of course, it's titled, uh, as Dr. Perryman typically does, a very long title about preserving the Permian Basin energy sector structure and the Odessa economy through the COVID nineteen and oil supply shock challenges. And of course, we all know what this uh, this, this means. I wanted to direct you to about page nine, which is in the scope of work section. And it talks about that the Perryman Group will be specifically number I, uh, evaluating and assessing the current issues going on in Odessa and the region such as job losses, signs of the economic hardship and vulnerabilities by the industrial sector. Examine all of that. And then obviously, the goal of this uh, will be to identify the actions that we can take to alleviate hopefully some of the most difficult problems. Uh, helping to uh, to keep the needed energy-related infrastructure and the community resources in play within the workforce. And then number K on the next page, uh, which is a very important part of this, is called uh, uh, their assistance in the dissemination of these studies and findings. So this is a tool for us, at least this one, I feel uh, when we, when Dr. Perryman and I talked about this specifically, was a tool for O D C and the community. Uh, everybody related in the community to have some form of ideas on strategies to assist businesses. We can all come up with things uh, that we think would be good and the manufacturing part of that, everything we talked about earlier is one of those, but specific things that he can see after these assessments of that could directly impact the energy sector, but also directly impact the workforce related to COVID nineteen. And then the dissemination of this into Austin, into Washington, honestly. We've talked to Brooks Landgraf, we've talked to uh, August Fluger, our incoming congressman and uh, my. August Fluger, our incoming Congressman, and, uh, Mike Conaway, of course, is still there. But the dissemination of the importance of what we are doing and continue to do and will have to do even better. Once we're through this on the other side, this gives us a document, a strategy, a firm foot to stand on as we disseminate this out. We don't want to, or I didn't want to be, uh, there to be any impression that we weren't looking at this very in depth. Very strategically in order to find ways to do specific things. Dr. Perryman is well respected, as we all know, in many, many sectors. He's our expert, not only the country's expert. So I think it's very important that we maybe, uh, put our confidence in him to do this. The cost is one hundred and twenty seven thousand two hundred. That's half when we initiate the deal and half when it's done. He will come in, he will explain it and he will and his team help to disseminate this. And it's also going to be connected, this, uh, Opportunity Odessa, which has been a behind the scenes kind of a, uh, effort. For planning and strategies, so they can also help with some of this. And I think it fits in well with that. So I have talked a lot there and I just wanted to throw it all out at once and we can answer questions and hopefully I can.
How much did you say, Wes? I'm sorry.
This study is a hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars. And I've asked him and he's agreed, uh, that he can do that within, uh, two weeks. So hopefully by next Friday or Monday following, we'd have this in our hands to use.
Wes, this is Peggy.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for continuing to think of, of things that we can do and, and, uh, and, and I'm really a proponent of this study. I do have a question though. On the article in the paper, uh, in the four-way splitter, which I thought was fascinating, and I'm so glad that that's all happening. That ODC was helping fund that. Have we already made that commitment?
No, ma'am. We, we have, uh. Initially committed, uh, in principle to supporting a manufacturing type effort related to COVID-19, but it would require a formal vote. Uh, it's not been specifically for that four-way splitter. At this point, it's been more of a protective, uh, equipment type of thing. Uh, and again, emergencies, uh, call for different ways of, of doing things. So, uh, if nothing else, I felt, uh, it was important enough on, for many, many aspects that I could cover that out of my approved budget already for workforce development or, 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 uh. Job retention or some form like that.
Well, it was really, it was very innovative and I was really tickled about it. But, you know, I know that there is a need to work fast and I think we all agree to that. I also think that we've demonstrated that we are available pretty quickly. I, I'm just going to go on record of saying, I think it's important that the council know what ODC is doing. And that the council get to understand and vote on what it is that they're doing. I, and it didn't, David, it isn't that I don't think you represent us well at all. That's not what I'm saying.
Oh, I understand and that's why we.
But I think, uh, you know, I'm not going to feel comfortable if you can just do these things and we don't really know about them. I mean, I think we can meet almost in a, as quickly as, as the law lets us and, and we can. And Michael can discuss them with us and can send out projects. So I'm not trying to slow anything down. I just really think when we're, especially since we're having to do this all remotely. But the need to stay informed is greater than it's ever been.
I think you're right.
I agree with Peggy.
Yes, ma'am, and I, and I agree completely. I, I just, uh, Michael and the mayor and we're talking last week about some way of. Making sure things don't get dropped and it, and I will take full credit as far as y'all not knowing specifically about that, when that one really happened. Really quickly. I don't want that there ever be a, a, a time when y'all felt out of the loop. But we are getting, uh, as you can probably imagine, we all are getting a lot of calls, a lot of, uh, questions about can ODC help with this and can ODC help with that? So really just looking for a forum, whether it's the way we, we're talking now or, uh, a two-hour posting for an emergency meeting to approve and then two hours with y'all. I'm perfectly fine with that. I don't think I ever have to do something that twenty-four hours or, or even, uh, a day or a little bit more than that would be too long to spread something out. Uh, on, on that. So you just needed to let me know how you guys want me to serve in this area for you guys and for the ODC, and that's what I want to do.
You had sent out a, a text, I mean, an email on April first for compliance to all download Zoom so we could, we could understand things. And I, I, I did, but I haven't heard anything since then. So I guess, I, all I can say is what I've already said. I think, I don't think that we need to circumvent every procedure that we have. I think they just need to be expedited.
Sounds good to me. Yes, ma'am. I did send that, uh, Zoom out to compliance just to, to be ready if we wanted to do something along those lines. But we've, we've not gone that direction. The city is doing this WebEx thing and that's fine. And, um, I, I don't want to leave compliance out of this process at all either. So we were, I think, maybe generalizing this particular category, and if we need to narrow that down in some way, that, that's fine also. Just whatever y'all want to do.
Michael has something to say.
Counsel, I think we can, we can easily coordinate with Wesley on the items that are related to this. I think if he and I are in constant communication, he can provide me the narratives. I can send them to you. And, uh, when ODC intends to have a meeting, we will begin the process of arranging one with you. So immediately after their approval, we can bring that to you probably within the next day or day or two, to make sure that you get the same information and are able to vote.
Are, are we in a position where we need to vote or we need to, uh, voice our opinion or vote on Ray Perryman's study that's going to be brought up today at the, uh, ODC?
I, I'm real comfortable with that because I think his studies are very, very beneficial. I was really talking about the other projects.
I don't disagree. I was just wanting not to slow down the process. If that was one of the questions that would need to be answered today, I'd vote that we go forward with it.
Natasha, is that something we can do?
Yes, that's something you can do. And, um. So Dietra, um, council member White and then council member Willis has something to say.
No, I don't. I don't know if I pushed a button or not, but I don't.
Okay, your hand is up.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I do. Hey, Wes, I have a question for you on.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, I think all of this that you presented is great. Um, I have a question though. I've seen some, some differing. Stories on, you know, with the media, uh, throughout the country on the physician's opinion on the splitters. You know, for the, for the, um, respirators and, and what have you. Anyway, and, and so there was, there was a real concern about a splitter where two patients were using. You know, we're working off the same machine, much less four. Have you guys talked to our medical representatives on what their wishes are and if they would be willing to use these items that are produced locally?
Um, Mark Merritt is leading the charge on that for West Tech SEAL and the pilots and, uh, getting, uh, a group to get materials, et cetera, together. And he is working with Texas Tech University Health Science Center on that and our hospitals, the way I understand it.
Okay.
Have not perfected this. Uh, there's not a. Magic, it just pop it in and go. So they are working through tests and through, uh, different prototypes and getting it to the right people that know whether this can do. And I had the same question, whether four people could be in the same room to do one ventilator. And they said, you know, at that point, when they get on a ventilator, it, you've already got it and everybody in there has it. So it doesn't matter if you're all in there together at that point. So as far as that side goes, it, it's okay, but they have not perfected this. They, they, he tells me that. This week they should have what they are going to be able to use and health side has signed off on it. So I don't know, but I'm not an expert on that either, on either side of that.
Yeah, I just, you know, I, I think we all agree, you know, how important it is to, to trust the expertise of our medical, or medical administrators and doctors. Because I don't want it to appear that we're trying to push them into, you know, doing something that they don't feel is in the best interest of their patients. And so, um, anyway, so thank you, thank you. Uh, I feel certain that you guys will explore all of those avenues. I appreciate you.
One thing I found out yesterday, oh, yeah, let me say this real quick. I found out yesterday, the, in the EOC, they're thirty-three percent of the respirators in use is their critical point. Uh, when they're going to start looking for additional respirators, uh, state nationally. Yesterday we went to forty percent, uh, so forty percent of the, um, respirators, I'm sorry, the ventilators. In the hospitals are in use. They may not all be on COVID patients, but they are in use. So they are already starting to look for more, uh, ventilators, um, around the country.
Okay.
Now, New York is actually releasing some and. Some extras that they're starting to let go of, but that's, it's a big concern, uh, especially for.
You know, I, I just wanted to go back to what Peggy said. I, I appreciate her so much with, with what she's saying and I do want to make sure everybody's in the loop. And I hope that there was not a, uh, a thought that, that we were trying to, we, it'd be so easy just to open that checkbook and say, we can do everything and I don't want to do that and nobody does that. But, uh, it sort of gets to be, uh, a little overwhelming when everyone's coming at you. So we were just looking for an efficient way of doing that. So I appreciate Peggy for you, you saying that so we can find a, a very efficient and timely manner to way to do this.
One thing they have come up with, uh, which, it's West Texas Ingenuity. Is when testing multiple people, they actually go into a little PVC, like PVC that you put in your ground for your sprinkler system. They built a little box that's open only on the back. Has holes that they put their hands through with gloves on. The samples, so they don't have to fully dress in PPE when they go from patient to patient. They can use one set of PPEs. And they're walking through what, uh, down for each patient because when you test, you don't know if they're positive or not. So that's been one of the things that they've been working on at the hospitals, to be able to save some of the, uh, necessary equipment.
Michael, did you have something to say?
Uh, no, I, I'm not sure why that, that went up.
So can I talk a second?
Sure. Yes.
Okay. I don't see my little hand, that's why I'm asking. Okay, I just wanted to make a motion that we would approve the, uh, the money, the hundred and twenty seven thousand two hundred to begin to do the Perryman study.
Motion in second and a second. Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously and we are finished with the agenda. So thank you everyone for being flexible and learning as we're going.
Thank you if I could, mayor, just to say thank you for your leadership and for, I know it's got to be hard for you as well as your family. We're all feeling it, but we're not having to be in front of the press or go live or any of that. And so I personally wanted to thank you for, uh, what you're doing for our city and for being there through this crisis.
Get out. Yes.
And Michael and your staff as well, we appreciate you so much.
They've been amazing.
We will certainly pass that along.
Thank you all.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.